All right, Baltimore City Council Budget Appropriations Committee. We are calling back to order Council Bill 20-0527, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2021. I am Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. We are joined by Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the Council, 6th District. And that is it, I believe, on the council. We're also joined by Kalen Young and Dominic McIlly on behalf of Council President Brandon Scott. And we have, I know Matt Stegman will be joining momentarily, representing Mayor Jack Young. We're also joined by Councilman Isaac Kiti Schleifer, 5th District, and Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. Before we begin this hearing, this is for Baltimore City Information Technology. Colleagues, I sent out an email earlier.
Can you hear me, Chairman? Because I can't hear you.
Does everyone else hear me? Kiti, you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Sharon.
This is Kevin Cardi, I can hear you.
Sharon? I think you gotta turn your volume up.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you.
Colleagues, I want to note, Council President Scott and I spoke with Todd Carter, who's the CIO, yesterday. As was the case with previous with previous council hearings with B sit. There are going to be certain topics that are off limits for today because there's sensitive information associated with them. And a lot of that has to do around ransomware, but I'm going to read through those. Any requests related to specific details into the 2019 ransomware attack and its findings? It's important to note that as of right now, Baltimore's ransomware attack is still an ongoing federal investigation. So B sit is limited in what they can say about that. Requesting specific details regarding Baltimore City's IT security, the current state of it, or gaps needing remediation, as well as requesting specific details about infrastructure, applications, or data vulnerabilities, or assessments or assessment-related results from these areas. If these are topics, colleagues, which you wish to discuss, Todd Carter has said that he will make himself available for a one-on-one private briefing. But I ask that you stay away from from these questions. I will use discretion as the chair of the committee that if we do touch any of these questions, we'll stop that line of questioning. So I just want to make sure everyone's fully aware of that, and you should have an email. I know we've been receiving a ton of emails, so if you need to go back and reference it, I sent it at approximately 11:57 a.m. this morning. So with that, Todd, I'm going to turn it over to you and your team. I know you've got a brief presentation, and then we'll jump right into questions.
Thank you, Councilman. Can you hear me? So first of all, thanks to Councilman Costello and the rest, Council President, and the rest of the council members for hearing us today. We will briefly go through these slides, and we'll take any and all questions that As we go through each of these services, I won't drain the slides or anything like that. I'll just point out just some of the key pieces of what the slide represents. The 2.6, 2.7 million administration really centered around our HR office, fiscal team, our admin, and senior leadership. They're doing a number of the engineering of processes and procedures within this particular service, and we can talk about that a little later. Next is enterprise innovation and application services, where we have our project management organization. That is the organization that manages projects not only for B sit but for the Baltimore City, our geographic information systems group. They handle the GIS, our database group, mainframe ERP, which is a big driver of our cost for 2021, and also our applications. One of the things that I wanted to highlight here is a major budget item of ERP. And as you can see, it's additional $17 million. If you were to pull, if you do a comparison basis of our budget, you'll find that when you pull ERP out, we're roughly 14% under a prior year's budget. With ERP, we are significantly higher. Slide please. This is our call, 3-1-1 call center. We've had a lot of success with our 3-1-1 agency, and we've done a lot of work. In fact, we'll talk about 3-1-1. Lisa Allen will join us for that conversation, and what we've during the COVID virus remediation, gotten a lot of productivity, a lot of good things coming out of 3-1-1. 1 is also part of the mission critical partners study that is looking at the consolidation of all centers with best practices, including fire, police, and all the different agency-specific all centers. They are part of that group, so we expect that at some point in time in the future, we'll see recommendations come out about the impact of that study, of the organizational directions relative to the consolidations, which may not impact. As you can see from the targets that they have below the actual versus targeted, they've been consistent last several years. Enterprise applications delivery. This is another key critical area for us, where we have our information security group. We have a new CISO by the name of Kevin Kearney. We also have a new Director of Infrastructure by the name of Bruce Gibbons. So this service encompasses those two groups in addition to our Help Desk, Fiber Group, 800 megahertz system, and our City Watch. One of the things that we came to the BOE with earlier in 2020 was a revamping of our our metrics. One of the metrics, new outcome metrics that you see below, which is the percent of employees completing cybersecurity awareness training. That's something I'm sure we'll talk about a little later on. We have a target of 100%. I will talk about where we are with that as we proceed throughout the day. And our last slide shows the historical capital allocations to B sit. As you can see, certainly the ransomware drove 2020 spend, but we've been working with finance and the administration to get a consistent and repeatable investment in IT. We believe that's long overdue, and we also believe that the administration has has really saw the need and recognized the changes that we've made that are positive. And it's sort of, it's a confidence booster to have the investment that we have moving forward. And our goal is to spend that money wisely, to improve security, improve liability of systems. I know I went through that fairly quickly, Council President, but my understanding is you guys really want to get to the questions. So I will turn it over to you, and and there may be a point in time where I bring in my team members for some specifics. But I'll turn it over to you, Council President. Excuse me, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Todd. Lisa, do you want to give a, can you give a quick two or three-minute overview on your end with respect to 3-1-1 before we jump into questions?
Sure. So we were very successful during the COVID operation, getting all of our staff out of the building, which included getting equipment, training all of our agents on how to plug the equipment up at home and use it at home, testing it, and working remotely from home. So we started that on March 14th, and we actually had everyone out the building in 3-1-1 with the exception of a few people that had some technical issues by Monday, the 23rd. So that transition went very well, very transparent to the customers. We also have worked with the agencies for specific service requests that we've put on hold or maybe delayed or are running as scheduled. So we put a message out on the web and on the app, as well as the agents also talking about the scripts that pertain to those particular service requests that people are calling in for. At first, we did get a lot of questions about the virus. The questions now have moved from the virus, of course, to when the city is going to open and what is open, and when we will be updating those messages and those service requests, which we're working with the agencies to do right now.
Thank you. And do you have, have you given your call operators updated scripts against COVID?
Yes, we have, and they are reciting them based on the service request that is being entered. Some service requests, as I mentioned, aren't affected at all. And then we turned it into kind of like a public service announcement that said, you know, when it was, when we should have stayed at home. We said, don't forget to stay at home, wash your hands, you can give the virus, and you can get the virus. We had a group of service requests that were delayed, so we would, we had a script telling the customers what delay meant. And then we had some service requests that we did have to place on hold, such as community pigeon and those things like that. So we had scripts for that. So the scripts are very specific to every service request, but those are the basic three categories we tried to stay with.
Okay, and when, when your operator gets a call for either a business that should not be open due to COVID-19 restrictions or reports of violations of either the stay-at-home order or social distancing guidelines, who are they routing those calls to?
It depends on what the establishment is. So we are working with the liquor board and the police department. So it's sometimes the liquor board will actually go and inspect what's going on and then transfer to the appropriate police facility or the liaison between police that they have. So those are the two main folks we're partnering with, with those types of issues.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Todd, quick question just on the increase in the budget this year. I think it jumps up about $15 million for the agency. Let's see, let me pull up the one second here. I know that
It's like, it's like 12 and change.
Pardon me, yeah, yeah, 13, yeah, 12 and change, 12 and a half. And I know there, there doesn't really seem to be an increase in the number of positions. Can you just give a general overview? I'm assuming that that's, those are contracts. Can you just give an overview of the dollar figure associated with, with each category of contract? I don't need you to get into any more detail than that, but
Well, the increase is is due to ERP project. The ERP project is not only Todd, I'm having I'm unmuted. Hear me now? Okay. I, I turned the sound up to 100%.
Yeah, if you could start that, start the response to that question again. So just break down for me that 12 and a half million dollar increase in terms of what category of contracts those are going to.
Yes, so the increase is a direct result of the investment in the ERP project. And that investment centers around several categories. One, contract labor for developers, writers. Well, as another category for software, for the Workday software, other category for consultants. But our increase is driven by spend for Workday, which is the ERP system that we're looking to drive with over this year and May of 2020. Get into a little bit on that project if you would like, but that's the driver of our change.
Got it. Thank you. We're going to cycle through council members based on the random order that you appear in my WebEx. Vice President Middleton?
I, I don't really have any questions at this time, but I, I think it would be proper just to give a shout out to Chris, that, that IT person for the, for the council has really been very good in helping with, you know, to, to get us up to par on our, with, you know, updates on Microsoft and so on. He's just been very instrumental, at least at my opinion, in helping to expedite updates on, as far as our laptops and computers and so on. So I'd just like to do a shout out for him, because we don't, we don't do that too often. And I think this is an appropriate time, especially since we've been going through this pandemic. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you, Council Middleton, and I really appreciate the feedback about Chris. Chris is part of a team that is looking to drive a lot of change for Baltimore City in terms of Office 365, the security of our workstations and laptops. So I really appreciate that coming from you.
Yes, his patience and expertise is really key into, you know, he's been teaching us a lot of things. And I, I think that is a key into us learning as we all go along together. So thank you again.
You're welcome. And I would say to the rest of the council, we have a full team of people just like Chris doing the same thing across the, across the Baltimore City during the COVID pandemic. And those guys have truly been wonderful, so thank you very much.
Of course.
I'm going to second what the Vice President said. I hope that Chris is not listening right now. Please do not promote him, please do not move him. Chris is phenomenal. That man has the patience of a saint. He sits next door to me. Chris takes my calls on the weekends at 9 o'clock at night, at 5:30 in the morning. He is a phenomenal representative of B sit.
Thank you very much.
Understand if you have to promote him, I won't be upset. Councilman Schleifer?
Hey. Sorry about that. So first off, I want to, I don't have any questions because BCIT is so responsive. So the millions of questions that we have over, over the years have, have been answered. I just want to thank you, Director Carter. You know, we, we seem to have been in a really bad place, I guess, a year or in change ago, just with the overall condition of just everything, service, where our money was going, how BCIT was operating. And I, and I just have to say, under your leadership, it really has been a game changer. I've seen just a tremendous amount of focus on actually getting the job done and getting things that most people don't pay attention to and which leads us to the issues that we experience. And I see just on a regular basis, your team handling the business, doing things that, again, you're not going to get accolades for because people don't even notice it. But I just want to let you know that as a technology person, I notice it. And I certainly appreciate what you guys are doing. And I fully support this increase in budget for you guys because I know that it's going to be going towards things that are long overdue and that you guys are going to deliver on that. So thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. And, and one of the things that I'll say about the team that we have put in place, these are team members who want the best for Baltimore. And they are dedicated, they're focused, and we, as a team, we have challenges, but it's, it's not the problems you have, it's how you solve them, it's how you communicate. So our team has been focused 100% on improving the reliability and consistency of our systems, not only infrastructure space, security space, but application space as well. So a lot of hard work goes into that, and we appreciate it.
Next up, Councilwoman McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Councilman Burnett?
No questions at this time. I'll do the one, take them up on the one-on-one offer, because everything I was, one of the asks is related to stuff you said don't ask, so.
Got it. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dorsey?
Hello, Mr. Chair, thank you. I wasn't going to chime in, but, uh, you know, I'm not one to shy away, I guess. I, first, I just want to thank Todd for helping me out recently. Again, whatever I said, very responsive. Total, like, game-changing difference from a year ago, two years ago, three years ago. Really incredibly helpful. One thing that has been brought up, I think, year after year with regard to the 3-1-1 system is the reporting back to people who are using the app and getting updates sent to them via email. And I know that I've heard from a lot of people that they would just like, you know, that they wanted to know and have this tool be made more useful to them. Through my conversations with 3-1-1 and BCIT, we've seen, I've seen in direct response to the requests that I've made that these feedback emails that we get when services are being closed out and created, now they, now they contain a direct link to the service, to the service request in the feedback system, in the reporting system. So it's really easy to go to, and that didn't exist before. We had the service request number in there, but it was not made into a link. So you couldn't just click on it, you would have to copy and paste it and go to a new, you know. And so that's been made really, really helpful. And that was in direct response to, to requests that I made. So I want to express my appreciation for that, especially after several years of requesting that these, these updates be made. And then more recently, an even smaller thing is I was getting sent, you know, just as a regular, everyday user of the 3-1-1 app, I was getting sent two identical notifications every time certain types of requests were getting closed out. And I'm going, why am I getting two of the same notification? It clogs up my inbox, I don't know why I should be getting, maybe they're different, and I just can't tell. I brought this to Todd's attention, and it's been addressed in just the last week since I brought it to him. So I just really want to express my thanks for how much the department has been improved recently particularly. One other thing that I have brought up in past years, and I haven't looked at it lately, but with open data, there is this there is this intersection of BCIT and the Department of Transportation with respect to parking citations. The old citation issuing machines, I don't know what they call them, did not have a GPS transponder in them. And then there was like, um, basically you would take between, based on the address that was created, that was used to identify where the ticket was issued, they would have to determine whether or not they could come up with a GPS location based on that. And based on whether or not we could establish a GPS location, roughly speaking, only then, if we had that, could we determine what council district, what police, and what police district the citation was being issued in. And in the absence of that data, it was impossible to pull the data and do a basic assessment of where, you know, in what police districts and in what council districts or what planning districts, I don't know what else, where geographically are lots of, say, bus parking, bus stop parking violations are happening. And I, I don't think that this is yet a resolved issue. What I want to see is that every single time a parking citation is issued or a parking in a bus stop citation issue, violation is issued, I want to see that searchable on open data based on council district and based on police district and all the, you know, any other geographic-based data that we can sort or basis that we can sort that data by. We need to be able to know where to better deploy resources based on a high rate of certain violations. And we also need to know where maybe the violation rate isn't high just because we aren't deploying resources there. And so that's really, really important, being able to better direct operations. This is something that, this is my fourth year asking for this for, and so I hope that we can make some improvement on this this year. That's it.
Well, Council, Councilman, I certainly will have our team look into that and get back to you. As you were talking through it, it makes sense. But there's also a lot of probably technical details that I'm not thinking of right now. So we will get back to you shortly. I don't know where the request landed prior to that. We know we have a lot of, of improvements we want to make to open Baltimore. And we want to get right on those kinds of things that can give data in a way that is consumable to you, residents, and others. I will say regarding the, you mentioned the 3-1-1 piece. One of the things that occurred last year is I came to a quote-unquote "closed" equals "closed" hearing, when we talked about just, you know, work orders being closed out, 3-1-1, City Watch, and for the chip system. One of the things that we, we did was we put together a cross-functional team, meaning team members from DOT, HCD, DPW, IT. And what that team does is led by a lady named Kenya Ashley, and they meet on a consistent basis solely for the purposes of how do we improve the data flow back and forth from 3-1-1, a work order system, and chip system. That team has been meeting for the last several months, and I think we're starting to see the fruits of, of their labor in making improvements to workflow, making improvements to data, making improvements to the accuracy of the data that's passed between the system.
With respect to that, I think part of that conversation about closed equals, closed means closed, and all of the years that we've been talking about this, the, the big takeaway, and the room where I see we have room for incremental, incremental improvement, at least from like a user and general public stance, is we always face this issue where we say, well, closed meant, in this case, that the person who was responsible for this phase of the response did their job, and that phase of the response was closed. And, you know, there's this general explanation that, oh, but another work order, you know, but a work order was created. Or but another 3-1-1, you know, issue was created in response to, to initiate the next phase. If we can't get to a place, and this has been the challenge, is like, we think, the general public thinks the first request that's made is the one that should stay open until what that person wanted done is done. If we can't get to that place, then I think the incremental progress would come from us being able to, when that first one is closed, when I look that up, the page for that service request should give me the service request number or the work order number or some other very specific information about what that next step is. And that still doesn't happen. If I were able to link from 3-1-1 request to next one, to next one, to next one, to get from beginning to end of the process, I'd be a whole lot happier than, you know, than
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I can't say that we're exactly there yet, but these are the kind of challenges that the team is focused on. It's also focused on how do we get consistent training for all the different users of either the work management system or the work management system, or 3-1-1, or 3-1-1 data. But that team is, is designed to specifically deal with those types of problems and challenges that, that you outline in a way that is easy for a resident to draw a line of sight from my original order, or if that original work order had turned into work orders from different systems. So we can get back to you on, on that as well, but, but we are on the same page with respect to how do we make this easier to get information, and easier to see the flow of information when a resident, when a resident looks up, hey, what happened to my, you know, my service request?
Mr. Chair, if I could make one last comment to follow up on that. I think that the point about standardized training and user interfacing with kind of the back end of the 3-1-1 system, or what did you call it, chips?
It's called chip.
Okay.
Yeah, chip.
Yeah, so people, you know, city employees who are inputting information, I think that there's a, there's a really important accountability aspect in tracking who is putting that information in. I'll give you one example that I know is, was really eye-opening for me, was in my first, like, two months after taking office, I actually spoke this morning to the guy who made me, made this call to me. We haven't spoken in three years. He, he called me because there was flooding on his street, and it had, the, the end of his street had, which is all grass, city-owned property, had been saturated with water for three years, and he couldn't figure out what was going on or what to, how to get anybody to do anything about it. And, you know, it was a long, long story, but some point in the process, after I got involved, a DPW employee went out to the site and said that they shut off the water meter that had apparently been just open and running for a house that had been demolished three years prior, when in actuality, you couldn't find the meter, and the meter had actually been buried three years prior, and no work was actually done. But it was put into the system that they shut off at a valve. And when I asked, in order to follow up, because the problem obviously wasn't resolved, nobody at DPW could or would tell me what employee said that they did work that obviously wasn't done, and what employee put that information into the system. And so there was no ability to trace it back, to hold anybody accountable for having not done their job, for having lied about doing their job. And so it's really, really important that we get this training piece right, and that we, I believe, demand that anybody putting any information into the system has to identify who they are at the point that they're putting it in. Thank you.
Salesforce does a much better job of tracking or audit trail of who does what to a particular order. So we, we got it there. We may need to look at what chip does, or what City Work does in terms of auditing, but that's something that we can certainly make sure that, that those systems are adequate with the, after that information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Sneed?
Um, I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Todd, I will share my thanks as well. This agency is a binary 180-degree difference from what we had 14 months ago under your predecessor. You were the right choice to be hired as the permanent CIO for the city. Very appreciative to Mayor Young for making that decision, and it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you. This is, it has just been unheard of levels of communication and collaboration, and I truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And look forward to working with you for the next four years and, and watching all the great things that you do. And, and I will also note, am fully supportive of the increase to your budget to address those things that have gone unaddressed for, for far too long.
Thank you.
And frankly, put us in a position that, that we unfortunately were last, last spring and summer with the ransomware attack. So thank you for everything you're doing. We are now going into recess, and we will be back at 2:00 PM for the Board of Liquor License Commissioners. Thank you.